Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting of the Council of the Whole for March 25th, 2024 to order. Do I hear a motion for the adoption of the agenda? All those in, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The agenda is approved. Now we'll move on to public comments. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to comment? And before we start, I would just read the instructions for public comment. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic that the council may have purview or control over. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over it, then the deputy mayor or presiding officer may request the speaker to suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute time limit. So Matt, there's no one in the room who wants to comment publicly? Is there anyone on the Zoom call?
Raise their hands before we call.
Yes, the, the original, our policies require you to raise your hand at the beginning of the public comment period, so there is no one else who has qualified to submit public comments. So with that, I will close the public comment period.
Councilmember Saunders has arrived.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Good to have you here. I can't, my vision is not so good that I can see that you just arrived. So thank you for arriving. With that, we'll move on to our discussion items. And our first discussion topic is Resolution 24-1947, Adopting the Lakefront Park Preferred Concept Design Plan. This is a resolution that will be scheduled for possible action at the council meeting on Thursday. We did discuss it and go over the recommendations from the Parks and Recreation Board, as well as hear from our consultants and, and allow them to answer questions that you had previously. But this is an opportunity to, to share your views on the preferred design that was presented by the Parks and Recreation Board and also to ask any questions of staff or the consultants who are here with us tonight. So if there are no questions right now, could we go around the table and hear the views of the council members? So we'll start with you, council member. Good. What are you thinking about this proposal and, and any comments or suggestions that you have at this point before we go forward with this?
My comments are that I want to retain as much of the cabins as possible. That's my main plan. That's what I would like to do. If I were to really want to.
Councilmember.
There I go. Okay, I can start over. My comments on the park is that I would like to retain as much of the existing cabins and structures as possible. I know that may not be 100% possible, but that's where I lean towards. I believe that things are usable, fixable, and I know that there's some effort to retain a lot of the structure even if they're going to be torn down, and I do support that, but I'd like to see more of them retained if possible. Thank you.
Member Ligo.
Thank you. I want to commend our consultants for a terrific job, and I want to recognize the effort and time they've put into it and the public engagement. I think from the work that you've done, it represents, I think, a very good reflection of what our community is looking for. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you have put into the design and each of the elements, and I am very supportive of this. I know there are questions about retention of cabins as well as the amount of parking that was suggested, and whether it's open space or playground, and I'm fully supportive of what's being proposed here. Thank you.
Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I would like to echo the comments of my colleague. Thank you very much for the work that is done, the Parks and Recreation Board and staff. This was a heavy lift to get here. It's a very important park for our community, and I think we did a very good job of engaging with the community, and I appreciate what you've been put together and presenting to us today. Specific to the design, I have, I, I do have some question around the parking, and I think it's more of a use question that maybe is a policy question for council more than anything. And then I did have a question about the, the Lion Creek Preserve options, and if those were reviewed by, you know, scientists that are, that are ichthyologists and other, and like, did they have a preference? Did the scientific community have a preference as to which would be better for the creek health and fish and wildlife health along that preserve? I would be more leaning towards whatever they thought was the better option for preserving the salmon runs and all the other fish that we have come up through there as well as the other animals. When it comes to the parking, I've, I'm wondering if those can be like load/unload zones during times where we're not using it, not having rental hours. I think that just gives our community that extra boost to be able to offload their picnic gear and then go park in an appropriate spot. If it's permit only, I think people will just park there, and then we're gonna have to manage that. And if it's a midweek, maybe, you know, let them load and unload and do their, their work. So that's again, kind of more of a policy question for us. As far as the design goes, if I were to pick the options, you kind of hit everything I liked, so I have no argument there. It's just the question about the Lion Creek Preserve and making sure that we have something that is hitting all the key points that the environmentalists and ichthyologists are looking for.
So who would like to respond? So who would like to respond on the load/unload element and make sure it's robust on the parking and also the biological considerations in the Lion Creek Preserve options?
I can go ahead and start the response to both of those. I'll start with the preserve question. So regarding the preserve, DCG Watershed has a team of fisheries biologists, ecologists, wetland biologists, and then our landscape architecture team, myself and Chuck included, specialize in areas with critical area resources and in natural resource restoration. So in terms of the design and the recommendation, we only propose things that would be suitable for this property and for this creek. So we know that dappled shade on creeks is necessary to keep them cool, especially where salmon are located. And so we do have a lot of existing shade on this creek, so we have shade on the south bank. We have trees that remained through the prior floodplain restoration project. So in the floodplain restoration project that was done back in 2012 to 2017-ish, a project I actually did work on, DCG Watershed, both worked on that prior to our merger. And the center part of the park was cleared for use as a restored floodplain. So the terrain was actually lowered. The small wetland that was there was lowered and actually became part of the engaged floodplain of Lion Creek. So it was an area where at the time, the comment that we received from the community and from the community operations, policing department, was that an open view provides Septed benefit, so provides the ability to look through the park and deter crime because of, of eyes on the park. So at that time, we did propose mitigation planting, you know, a forested buffer, but there were two large trees, specifically birch trees, that were taken down in the center of the park. It was either two or three. It was definitely two birch trees. So those were taken down. It reduced the canopy in the center of the park, but none of the other trees were removed. So there is, you know, good shade that's existing. So the question that we posed was, would we prefer, when we remove some of the invasive material that's colonized in the center of the park, to stay with something that's characteristic of a floodplain, which is a created floodplain, or to go with more canopy trees to bring back the old forested look? And this was based on comment that we got from the early survey, which was, I miss the trees. Or it was, there's so much growing in the middle, what happened to our views? And so we got both of these comments, and so that's what we proposed. So new information since the last time I presented to you on March 7th is that, you know, we have been providing these updates to the tribes, both the Snoqualmie and the Muckleshoot on occasion throughout the project, and have occasionally heard back from them with guidance or direction, refinement to what we're, what we're working on, what we're bringing to the public. So the comment that we got from the Snoqualmie recently, and this was in, I think, the report that was provided to you for this meeting, was that the Snoqualmies reviewed the plan, and they understood the choice, but they said, based on the fact that this area did not historically have a floodplain, they would advocate for a more forested condition. And so while we know that either would be ecologically possible, they have provided a recommendation that a more forested buffer come back. So we do have time before we need to make these actual decisions, and both of them would be viable for creek health, and there's more work that, you know, is going into the planting plan for any mitigation that happens in concert with the park improvements. So it's not a decision that we would have to make right this minute. And we can still provide a forested buffer with open views. So if the council does decide that that's the option to pursue, open views, but also bringing back some additional canopy to the center of the park, we can absolutely come up with a hybrid preserve option that satisfies all parties, hopefully.
Thank you very much. I'd be interested in seeing what the hybrid looked like, just to understand that a little better. Appreciate that.
Great. And then to the parking question, if you'd like me to respond to that. So we do have our transportation consultant, Jeffrey He. He's our transportation engineer. He's online also. As far as the parking, so in order to apply for our RCO funding, we need to know what the construction cost estimate may be. And so the construction cost estimate is how many will be parked, you know, in the, in the construction drawing, right? But it doesn't make a decision about operational limitations that the city may choose to exercise as they operate the park. Now, we could build the spaces and you could decide how it's working and then change the signage. You could always make a change to how those spaces are operationally limited. But in the conversations that we have heard thus far, loading and unloading is going to be critical. We will have an obligation to provide accessible parking. We know that that minimum is likely to be three. The maximum is likely to be five. That's why there were five shown in all of the potential designs, is that that could be the maximum that we're held to, depending on the programming of the park structures. There may be a reason to also include something like staff parking. If one of the cabins is retained for the office space that was discussed, we know that the city has a shortage of office space and that the public requested a presence on the park, somebody like a groundskeeper. This may solve both issues. I think used as a community policing office was mentioned, but either way, again, the construction dollars is what we're working on to make sure that we have a sufficient ask to RCO and to the grant funders, and then the operational decisions about who will occupy Cabin Six and how those spaces will be operationally limited. Those would be resolved by the city and don't have to be, that decision doesn't have to be made right now to determine our path to funding.
Thank you for confirming there's no funding restrictions on that parking, other than the ADA. Appreciate that.
Yes, thanks. And I think I'm broadly in agreement with the options that are here. I just wanted to talk about the first two points. So with Lion Creek Preserve, I'd want to see it, of course, but I am liking that hybrid, because if you look at how the community split, they were roughly 60/40 meadow with forest, which means both options had a lot of support. And if the tribes are also thinking about forests, I'd like, you know, can we, can we have both? Can we have forests around the stream buffer? Can we have meadows elsewhere in the preserve? So I'd like to see what that hybrid looks like. And then with parking, I was initially skeptical about the lower parking option, but I think the argument that appealed to me was there's never going to be enough parking for the park. People are going to be having to park over by City Hall. And so if there's too, if there's more parking, but still not enough, there's going to be people that are circling around, and that's going to cause congestion. So I'm okay with the minimal parking. Now, I don't think this was in the consultant's purview, but if people are going to be walking from City Hall, I do think we should be looking at ways to make that crossing safer. And, you know, low-cost ways, you know, for instance, I'd like to see if there was a flashing light, a flashing signpost that we could put at the slip lane for going from eastbound 104 to southbound 522, which currently it has a crosswalk, but not much else. So we can put, can we put a pedestrian flashing light just to make that crossing safer? Can we put in, can we retime so that the pedestrian crossings are automatic? Can we put in leading pedestrian intervals? You know, I think relatively low-cost options, because it's going to be a few years before sound transit upgrades the highway, and it'll probably even more years before we get a bridge over the, from the Burke Gillman to City Hall. And so what can we do to make that crossing safer if we're going to be encouraging people to use it? So I think that's something that we should be thinking about. But overall, I like the options that are presented here. So thank you.
So Corey or Amber, would you like to respond to those topics that Councilmember Goldman raised?
I'm happy to do that. And as I mentioned, we do have Jeffrey He from our transportation engineering firm. So I'll start on the traffic comment, and then Jeff, feel free to hop in if you want, or if you have anything to add. So I think the, you mentioned not in our purview. So in terms of what will be included in the construction drawings and brought to permit, that's correct. So we won't be providing a detailed construction drawing for the intersection improvements, and part of that is because of the work that's already happening around the sound transit improvements. We would have to then say that, you know, our project was now on that schedule and that the coordination between those two parts would be necessary before this could move ahead. And so we provided, we did review the 90% plans that had been submitted to the city from the Sound Transit, for the Sound Transit project, and then we did review the intersection. So this was Jeff and his partner reviewing those conditions, and recommendations were provided that we provided to the city and that the city was then going to be working on the potential for following up the, some of the intersection improvements. So when we met with the residents of Beach Drive, they had some concerns about turning movements on the southbound 522, a U-turn action that was happening, kind of unsanctioned on Beach Drive. There was also some queuing issues on Beach Drive based on the signal timing. And so we had heard about some specific issues related to that intersection that are a problem now, and we would not want to exacerbate by developing this park project and not paying attention to those. So those improvements, those suggested recommendations for change were provided to the city, and I believe that Public Works has been handling, you know, following those up. So those are not in our design of the project, but I think that that, you know, we can comment on those things if there's additional questions. So one thing that has not come up is the idea for interim solutions before the other improvements happening. And I think that's definitely something that we can explore in the next phase of the project, for sure. The decision would have to be made pretty quickly if that was something that we wanted to target with funding. And the funding that we are looking at currently for the Recreation and Conservation Office is about recreation and conservation. So there are some ability to provide, you know, improved crossing or improved trails, but I don't know that we have a targeted funding source for those with the RCO deadline. So that may be a next round of funding that we would need to look for to target some interim improvements. And we'd need to come up with a plan for that if that's something that the city wants us to pursue.
And this is Jeff with Transportation Solutions, the traffic consultant. Think in short, it's sort of a work in progress to figure out what short-term or even long-term pedestrian safety improvements could occur at that intersection. Regardless if it's short or long, we're still going to have to incorporate that into what Sound Transit is planning at that intersection. Any work related to the signal is going to, or signal flashing begins, adjustment in the signal timing, those do impact what Sound Transit is planning. Not saying that we can't do anything, but we still need a, that's still a work in progress, and like what Amber said, something we can take care of or look to take care of, particularly in the next phase.
Councilmember Saunders, you're up. And greetings, Councilmember Furutani.
Hello. Thank you. And sorry, it was a little late, but I missed a little bit of the beginning of it, so I apologize for that. But I just want to be clear that what I'm speaking to is my input on the city park, the, at the lake, the Lake City Park. Is that right?
Correct. And any questions or thoughts you have on the design plan? Because we are going to hopefully be voting on the approval of the preferred alternative on Thursday.
Okay. All right. Great. Perfect. Thank you for that. Well, I, I'm, I would like to see, I know there was talk about bringing down, many of the buildings seem like they're in bad repair and need to come down or be repaired, remodeled, or whatever. I'd like to see us keep as many as possible, if, if it's possible, if they're safe enough, or if we can use some for future cabin use. I like the design. I like the idea of not having minimum parking. I feel like there needs to be some kind of a a safe way of transporting people to and from the parking at City Hall. That would be an expense that we would have to incur, that I don't know if that's even in an option right now, but some kind of a some kind of a golf cart, if you will, of, you know, if people needed help getting over and back. I think that there's still some, there's some conversations that need to be had about that, about how to safely get people over and back across, across Boffel Everett Highway. But the overall design, I think, is nice. I'd like to see, make sure that we do recognize our any native tribes. I don't know if we have, we have even spoken about that, but if there's a way to somehow maybe dedicate one of the cabins perhaps, or a structure to the native people. I think that's all I had to say.
Any questions, Ellen, for our watershed consultants? I never, I never get your name quite right. DCG Watershed Consulting? Or for Corey?
I don't have any at this time, but thank you so much, and I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing on this project.
And could I ask Corey or City Administrator Hill to address the cabin demolition issue, please, since that's come up a couple of times?
Yeah, so in RCO, when we applied to get to purchase a property, they do not allow purchase of buildings, and we did carve that section out of the buildings that are failing immensely. That would just be over beyond a budget that we could rehab those three and the parking garage. So with that funding, those will be going away in our early works demo. But we are keeping going on this concept design. The cabin six, the garage will be turned into the bathhouse, and then the main cabin will be kept and re-updated, but looks will maintain. Keep that, like, look out there that it is, so.
There's also the picnic shelter structure, which will be retained. And then my recollection is that the materials from the demolition will be used and repurposed in the rest of the design of the park, whether it's bricks to use for walkways or timber used in the interior of the, of the, of the main building.
Yeah, so today, Amber, Chuck, and I were out there sticking stuff that can be reused, some of like the old wood and the carports, or some of like, some of the stuff it does has hazmat material in it, asbestos, so we're not going to be able to use everything out there, but we are piecing out what we can, and we'll be storing it, preserving it, and reusing it.
Thank you. Councilmember Furutani, we're interested in any thoughts you have or your leanings on the preferred design, and also any questions you might have for our staff or consultants, and thank you so much for zooming in from far away.
My apologies, colleagues, for being so late. Turns out that certain technologies don't necessarily work well in other countries. So I apologize for my tardiness. Appreciate basically consultants coming in and speaking with the group today. I apologize for missing the presentation. I caught the tail end of Councilmember Goldman's comments, and I can only echo those that, you know, having, having safe pedestrian access to the park is paramount for the park actually being a useful asset for the city. My thoughts on the preferred alternative, I, I, I think that that really hit the nail on the head in terms of community input and what we saw from the community at several, well, two public meetings, as well as basically comments that we've gathered on the website. In fact, one of the nice things about having that Lake Forest Park, or LFP, lakefrontpark.com site, is that it's really easy to direct people to actually see what's going on with the park, and so I think that was a great strategic move. It's still useful even after the survey has closed. The only other thought I had was that the timing of the demolition of those structures that are on the property, I know that, I don't know if, I can't tell if the mayor's in attendance, but I know that the mayor had some concern over being able to time that work coincident with essentially the neighbors not being present. Obviously, you know, you're not inconvenienced by the work if basically you're not there. So just wanted to ask if the timeline, I just saw springs, or was it summer/fall 2024? And so I didn't know if there was any more specific dates on those demolitions.
Corey, do you want to address that?
Yeah, so we're going into permitting now. I think the earliest demo work we could start is July 1st, and that's if everything is going smoothly. And later, we have to get the demo done before November, so we are working hard to get it done this summer, but we'll have to see.
Right. Well, thanks. Yeah, I know at this juncture, it's very hard to tell, but just, just to raise that concern.
So without any other comments or questions from the council? Yes, Councilmember Riddle.
Well, at least one came to mind. The beach area, is that intended to be sand or is that natural? Have we considered what that interface, what the water looks like?
Yes. Please go ahead and answer.
Turn yours. Okay, so yes, so, you know, the, the natural beaches on Lake Washington typically don't have a very sandy substrate. They are, you know, there's sediment that moves from the creek, and then there is gravel. So the system is heavily disturbed, and the lake is starved for gravel and sediment material. So one thing that we'll be working with the permitting agencies, the regulators to do, is to suggest a specification for a gravel sediment material that can be placed at the shoreline to help replace some of that, that gravel that the system is starved for. Now, location, because of the sediment that naturally moves down Lion Creek, we do have a finer material that deposits along the shoreline. And so in all likelihood, even if gravel sediment is put in, we'll still have a finer beach-like sediment that accretes in this area. This is an accreting area of the lake, which is a nice material to walk on. So we will, you know, be designing this, looking at the natural system. Now, there is the lawn present, and, you know, the sandy transect kind of comes up and meets exactly with the, you know, the lawn vegetation. The lawn is going to be something that we're going to attempt to protect and leave as it is. We wouldn't be able to really develop a new lawn as part of a healthy beach ecosystem, and being that there's a ribbon of wetland there, the best bet is just to protect it and leave it. And so in that way, that may include protecting some of that edge of that sandy margin and then placing other sediment out beyond it. But that's definitely something that, you know, is considered, will look specifically at the restoration for this beach, and that'll all be done in concert with the regulating agencies. So both the Army Corps of Engineers, WDFW, and the city.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Which I think that was the only question I had left, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments that council members wish to share? Okay, I will just share my views then. I also support this preferred alternative. Like my colleagues, I am in acknowledgement of the tribal comments, I would like In acknowledgement of the tribal comments, I would like to see um, some kind of hybrid that still keeps open line of sight. But perhaps adds a little more tree canopy. So I know that's challenging. Is, would that be an additional cost item? Or would that just be part of our range of cost estimates right now?
Um, our cost MS, our cost estimate was just based on that whole area as planting. And so there was not a specific type of planting that was explored. So it'll be consistent with what we've looked at already.
Thank you very much. I, I just was uh, wondering if we were upping the ante here. Uh, so I, I would be um, supportive of a hybrid, but still one that uh, maintains some line of sight. So some acknowledgement of the, the mixed community view and the tribal concerns. But still being mindful of the fact that sixty percent of our community wanted to keep some meadow and, and line of sight. Um, so that, that sounds great. And I appreciate the fact that they're, they're both. They both have uh, biological value in terms of protecting the stream. Um, when it comes to the parking, um, I also support the limited parking. I think the idea of dis- of uh, disabled parking, um, loading and unloading and perhaps one staff. Uh, parking space makes sense to me. I am persuaded because of the um, potential congestion and impact. That would result if we had just a couple uh, or, you know, two or three regular parking spaces. Uh, and, and what that impact that would have, not only in terms of um, people cruising through and circling around. But also people getting frustrated when they can't find a parking space. So uh, I think it's better to send the signal to uh, park at City Hall unless you fit into uh, unless you're loading and unloading. I do share Councilmember Saunders' view about what loading and unloading will involve. But I do think we have time to figure out ways to make that go more smoothly. And certainly we'll have a period of time when we perhaps don't have the full pedestrian improvements made. And we'll need to be mindful of that. And uh, we'll also see the experience of how busy things are and at what times and what times of year and so forth. So uh, with that, I'd say the rest of the design, the dock, the beach, the, the um. Uh, main building, the bathhouse, uh, all, all of that saving building six, all of that seems wonderful to me. I, I wanted to just speak up in favor of what um, our community said also, that they wanted a little bit. Better playground equipment than the, than the walking on logs and rocks uh, design, which I understand was just a placeholder. But that is something that I think we heard loud and clear that, um, and I thi- it's coming up in other contexts too, that we need more. Play structures uh, available for young families in the city. So I'd echo that as well. Uh, so I don't really have any questions because I've been involved in a lot of these meetings myself. And uh, I do want to commend the staff um, for uh, the whole staff. Uh, but especially Corey for the work that's gone on and our consultants for making this fairly easy for us. Because the interaction with the community, um, the options that were presented with the community, the, and, and the final design. Oh, I also want to uh, commend our Parks and Recreation Board. No one's here, but they really have worked hard on this and, and made very thoughtful comments. And so um, I for one, I'm pretty excited about moving ahead with the next step. Councilmembers, anything else? Yes, Councilmember Riddle.
I have this tendency to hear something and it brings a thought back to my mind. Um, has there been a discussion um, regarding the parking for like a police reserve spot? So that they have easy access to come and um, engage in whatever way necessary with the park?
Um, so there hasn't been a specific conversation about that being a police service vehicle only parking. Um, but again, the parking lot would be constructed as it would be in the design. And then those, you know, there could be operational limitations uh, included. And um, as far as the number of staff parking uh, and number of load and unload. We will have uh, more updated information about what's going to be required based on the post occupancy of those structures and the office, you know, space. So we'll have more information about whether or not we'll have the maximum requirement of ADA five or whether it'll be, you know, three. And then we'll have two other spaces that can be um, operationally limited uh, based on the city's preferences. So all of that is coming in the subsequent phases of design. Um, and so there will be more time again to have an idea of how many spaces there are. And if the city determines that the capacity is available there to have one reserved space for uh, a, a police vehicle.
Thank you. You were talking set-ted earlier. I didn't know if it'd come up in part of that conversation.
Absolutely.
Um, and then as far as, yeah, the, the playground, I, I know my kid's getting a little too old. To play in playgrounds these days, though she still does. Um, anything that encourages more imaginative play. You know, you don't want it to uh, linear. And sometimes we do see some of these parks that are just very linear in their use. So I think kind of any, it's so hard these days balancing, you know, safety and size and cost. But anything that can kind of ensure that there's an opportunity for this creative imaginative use uh, would be wonderful. And that was the other thought I, the last thought I had, I guess, was about the um. Uh, the dock. I didn't ask this before, but I'm assuming the dock is all on pilings and none of it is a, is adjustable to the heights of the lake. In other words, nothing's floating. Is that correct?
Um, so we have explored both options. Um, and we did include in the pricing that it would be all fixed pier. And so we, it is priced currently at the more expensive option. Um, there was the request in the discussion about having an accessible kayak launch located off the end, the deeper end of the pier. And uh, that will have some floating component, basically, you know, to allow people to get into the water. Um, and so we have a marine coastal engineer who does dock design, who'll be determining, you know, the rest of that. We know that there's a cost factor. We did think about early in the concept where there might be the opportunity for phasing. Um, and where there might be the opportunity for cost management. So while the current cost estimate and the current assumption is all fixed pier with the, uh, you know, acknowledging the accessible launch. Um, there may be the option later, if the cost is necessary and the conditions are sufficient. To change the deep end of the pier to floating to reduce construction costs. But that's not the assumption that we're moving ahead with. Um, but you guys will hear about that option later when we're making cost decisions.
Sorry to jump ahead. Just thinking about again, for accessing the water uh, with your watercraft, if the water is somewhat low, it can be challenging to get off a fixed dock. Uh, in engaging without another apparatus that will transition you down. So I appreciate you taking the cost in consideration and continuing to work on those with us.
Anything else, Councilmember Saunders or Forutani? Anything else you'd like to add? So that brings us then to the end of our agenda somewhat early. Um, uh, so one last chance to ask any questions or make any comments, yes, Councilmember Riddle.
I'm just curious if you have any questions for us. Is there anything that you would like to hear our input on that we haven't already addressed? Put you on the spot, I'm so sorry.
Uh, not at this time, but I also know that I will be back here in um, about a month to the Parks and Rec. Board with the schematic design and then to you guys in two months with um, another update. So um, there will be more to come.
Mr. Mayor and City Administrator Hill, any other considerations you'd like to share with us before we get down to uh, voting next uh, this Thursday?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and, and many thanks to Corey and, and the consultants for all the hard work on this, as well as the Parks and Rec Board. Um, I think it's a, I think it really is reflective of the community's um, values. And I, I appreciate so much the thoughtful discussion that the council's had about the project. And um, other than that, I really don't have anything to add.
Thank you very much. I am, I, I, I will say once again that this is the first public meeting process that we've had in the city of Lake Forest Park. That was very positive and friendly. So it's a good indication of community support. Um, and before we adjourn, just a few editorial comments. I wanted to thank um, the staff for uh, a very uh, successful retreat um, over the weekend. I know there's a lot of work that went into putting that together. I want to thank the council members for a really good discussion. So uh, just since I have the floor here, just the opportunity to say thank you. I know, I, I know both um, how much time was spent to prepare and how much time we all spent there on our weekend. So I feel like we made good progress um, in setting out um, an agenda for the future. So. Uh, any other comments? With that, we are adjourned.
Yeah.
Thank you.